Okay, we'll call the meeting, go order. Um, first off, approve the minutes for my second meeting, does everybody review those? We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes for my second.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion, additions, questions in the minutes? Okay, if not, Keith.
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Come on.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, resolutions for, uh, CWSRF and EWSRF. Joan, is that you, or?
You know, those go down with Jasper, let's wait till we get, till we rearrange those down to A to S.
We can sure do that.
Cause that all goes in together with those.
Okay. Alright, uh, then the other resolution too?
Yeah, these are for, um, the refinancing of the bonds that we did at the special meeting. So, um, I would need a motion to approve the rea- the reauthorizing issuance of 1.15 million in refunding improvement bonds. And, uh, this is now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the city as follows. Authorization and sale, there is hereby authorized to be issued a series of bonds designated City of Washburn Refunding Improvement Bonds 2016. The total prin- total principal amount set forth in section two below, which is the 1.15 million, um, the bonds, for the purpose of refunding the refunded bonds. The sale of the bonds was awarded on April 28th, 2016 to Doherty and Company LLC, Minneapolis, Minnesota, on the terms and conditions set forth herein and at the purchase price of 1.135625, plus accrued interest and such sale of the bonds for said properties hereby, and all things readified approved and confirmed.
And this is the same one that we talked about at my second meeting, correct?
But yeah, the re- the refunding of those 2009, yeah.
Okay, so, um...
So we just need a motion on that?
Motion to approve the resolution, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I move to approve the resolutions to authorize and confirm refinancing of 2009 bonds to Doherty and Company.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, employee health insurance?
I suppose I can go through that, is, uh, we had a meeting with Mike Nelson and, and the employees, and, uh, for this year, we're gonna continue to stay with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, or at least that's our recommendation. Um, and then, next year, we'll take a look at it again. Uh, Mike recommended looking at it earlier this time. Uh, probably start in like September and see what kinda rate increases and things like that, what happened. But as for right now, uh, I would recommend, or we would recommend, that, uh, we stay with the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Employee Health Insurance.
Uh, does that run from like July to, to July, or how does, or is that?
I believe it's July to, to July, yeah.
It's June 1st.
Oh, June 1st, June 1st to?
Yep.
July 1st to the end of June, I think, right?
I would think so, that would be more than.
We normally sign them by June, yeah.
Yeah, really should, give it a little more time to research, so. Okay, so do we have a motion to, was that a motion you were making, or was that just?
I'm not sure if we need a motion on that, since it's sta- since it's staying the same.
Well, the, the price actually went up, so, like, why don't we just have a motion and then we'll, uh, then we'll be safe.
Okay, I, I move that we, uh, stay with Blue Cross and Blue Shield Employee Health Insurance.
For the 2017 year?
Well, 16, 17, yeah.
16, 17.
Okay. Any second?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion on that, yes?
What is the going rate, just for my knowledge, per, per health insurance?
Um, a single policy is about 600 a month, and a family is around 1500.
Okay, good enough, I just, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think, you have to leave them, yeah, okay. Okay, any further discussion?
I just, I didn't know.
Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, April, old, old brand, requesting to bring donkeys into town for practice or parade.
I guess she's not here.
Okay. Alright, gaming site permits for the American Legion. We have Memorial Building, what about Saloon, Max Place? Suppose we gotta do each one independently, I suppose? So I'll make the motion to approve the gaming site permit for Memorial Building?
No second, yeah.
Any discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make motion to, uh, gaming site permit for the American Legion for Riverboat Saloon?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that one? Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Aye. And I will make the third motion, the gaming site permit for the American Legion for Max Place.
One second.
Okay, any discussion on that one? No, Keith?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Come on.
Aye.
Yes, aye. Okay, State Water Commission and grant for new intake at the water treatment plant. Jasper, I'm assuming this is up to you?
Sure. Did you have a chance to read that letter that Joan sent out late last week at all?
Yeah.
Yes, good guess, one yes.
Oh, for the, uh, water?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
So, okay, long story short, um, going all the way back to 2009, um, we had started looking at, um, trying to get some grant funding for, uh, new intake. Um, some of that came from back when they had the ice jam down in Bismarck, and they shut the, uh, shut the dam off, and subsequently had a lot of bad things happen here in Washburn, uh, with boil orders and all that. Um, so, we had gone out looking for some funding, um, over the next couple of years, applied for some, uh, State Water Commission grant funding, um, hoping to get a 75 percent, 75, 25 percent grant. Um, eventually, they did give the city a 50/50 grant. Um, so, at that time, we're looking at about a 3.6, 3.7 million dollar project. Um, and the city would've been looking at, you know, covering 1.28 million. So, when we looked at the rate increases for that, um, you know, with having the water plant increase so fresh in everybody's mind, um, the idea of, you know, having a $13 increase in rates just, you know, didn't seem, you know, economical at the time, or feasible to proceed with. So, um, we kinda sat tight, um, the city and the commission at that time didn't really wanna proceed with anything. Um, we wanted to kinda see where the Red River Valley Supply Project progressed to. Um, since then, um, the letter that was sent out, um, was basically a plea for additional funds, the ones that, you know, Joan emailed out, um, they eventually came back and gave the city another 15 percent, basically making a 65, 35 grant. Um, I guess we haven't really looked at, you know, rates and all that for a, what a 3.7 million dollar project would be. And again, it wouldn't necessarily have to be that, but, so, over the last couple of years, Joan and I have been getting, uh, phone calls from the State Water Commission, wondering where we're at, um, with this. And we've been kinda sitting tight, you know, seeing where the Red River Valley Supply Project goes. And, um, I don't, I'm now less confident, um, that it's gonna be, that they're gonna put a new intake in west of Washburn. Um, I'm also not certain that, you know, the city would necessarily wanna buy into that and have it be its sole water source. Um, I'm also, you know, going back to the original grant application, it was for a horizontal collector well. Um, I don't know that that's really the right option either. So, what we had, um, done, well, that was in 2014, so a couple of years ago, we went back to the State Water Commission, cause we didn't like some of the wording in the, in the contract, cause, um, originally, they wanted more or less shovel-ready projects. Um, so we went back to them saying, um, we wanna do a little bit investigation. So they actually changed the wording in the contract, so that, you know, as part of stage one of your, of the funding, you could investigate the best method to correct the intake issue. Um, so, just so you guys could be certain that, you know, if you did have us just do some preliminary, um, put together like some sort of tech memo or something outlining what it would actually cost, um, that you would get the grant funding for that.
So, so the original, um, thought was a collector well, is that, that's what the 3.7 million was for?
Yep.
Okay.
And I, now I, I guess I've learned a little bit over the last couple of years, and I, I just don't feel like that's probably the best, not that we went and looked at it as an alternative, you know, and say a tech memo just to say we looked at it, uh, but, um...
Jasper, can you explain just the short version of a collector well?
A collector well is, so right now, you have an intake where you have a case on that goes down the ground, and a pipe that goes straight out into the river, and it just takes straight river water. So a collector well, we would put the case on in deeper, and we would put perforated screens basically out underneath the riverbed. Um, so it would, it would take, it would go into the aquifer below, but it would also take, uh, filtered river water down through the, through the riverbed into the pipes and bring it in. So it, it brings in pretty clear water, but what we've seen is it also, uh, has some influence in groundwater, which isn't always a bad thing, but your plant is really set up just for surface water, um, and doesn't, so if, if we had some iron to manganese or background ammonia come in, we're not, the plant isn't really set up to treat that. So, that's why I'm a little hesitant that that would be the best option. Um, you know, and, so yeah, that, that's what a collector well is. And the long and short of why I'm, you know, not necessarily sold on one for the city of Washburn now at this point.
So is Bismarck, they're gonna let a groundwater in with theirs, you know, or?
Yeah, yeah, but they also soften, so it's not, it's big of a deal.
Right, yeah.
And the background ammonia is probably the bigger issue. Not that it would necessarily be, not that we would necessarily have it up here, but...
George, you have a question?
And so if the channel of the river moves, would this be good or bad, that's with this collector well?
For a collector well, it, it does not matter, that's, that's one of the beauties of a collector well is...
Yeah, cause that channel moved, we get another flood, that could go on the other side, and we'd be without water again.
And the other, the huge positive to a collector well is that, no matter how much it rains, or the, whatever the spring runoff is, you're not affected by it, because it filters through the, through the riverbed before it hits there. Um, so, so there's some major positives to a collector well, it's just that there's also, you know, what's your, you know, your plant is set up, currently set up for right now.
Okay, so...
So, long, you know, I've just talked a lot, but we, you know, we've been getting some pressure lately from the State Water Commission to, to, to do something, um, so, you know, or I think they're gonna ask you to give the grant money back.
I think they want their money back.
So, it's, it's either do something with it, or, you know, say you're not going to. Um, but I think if, if you do, if you just, if we continue not to do something, they're going to take it back anyway. Um, so it...
Well, just what will our options be?
I guess, you know, going back to what the first part of the original contract was, was to do an investigation to see what the best method, uh, correct the problem. Basically, that would be just, you know, us putting together a tech memo that would outline alternatives. Alternative A would be do nothing, or whatever, which costs, just say nothing other than what the report is. Uh, you know, and then look at some different options from, you know, modifying the existing intake, um, putting in a new traditional intake, um, looking at some angle wells maybe, or a collector well.
What do you mean a traditional intake?
A conventional intake, which is what you have.
That's what we have, yeah, okay.
So maybe putting in something that's deeper with, um, you know, more lines, you know, maybe having a line that goes out to, you know, to each pier, where you could get water from, you know, as the channel moves over years, it could, uh, give you more flexibility, I guess.
Well, I think where it's at right now, you really can't go any deeper where it's at right now, right?
Right, it's, you know, we...
You would have to go to the other side of the river to get deeper, I would think.
We had some, you guys had some issues when they went down to about 13,000 CFS, where the water was kinda just trickling in, and I think, you know, the guy, the guys did some, uh, did a good job of informing, you know, the state of that, and they've, they've only gone down to, I think, about 14, 15 cents. Um, you know, but, you know, pre-flood, they were going down to 13 pretty regularly.
So, so what are you asking, if we wanna?
I'm actually not, I'm more or less making you aware of this, and I would be glad to put a, um, a task order proposal together to, to do the, the tech memo, outline, uh, basically doing the investigation part of this. And I could bring that back next month. Um, maybe you guys just wanna decide that, you know, you're not gonna spend any more money on the intake, um, and let's not even do nothing, you know, let's give it back, I mean, that's an option. I'm not recommending that, I would at least probably go through the investigation to see, you know, what the costs really are, you know, what your options are, what the costs are, and what ultimately the, uh, the user rate increase would be to the residents.
What's the necessity? Is it absolutely necessary to do this?
It would be an investment in a long-term water source, um, cause like I just mentioned, we've had times in the last couple of years where there's been water barely trickling into the, into the intake. So if you got into a low-flow situation, or went into a drought, more of a drought situation, you could, you know, have a time where, worst-case scenario, you can't get water into the city.
Well, we have pumps before.
Yeah, so, yes.
I know, it's not, it's not our best option, yeah.
Yeah, where they physically went and put a pump out into the river and...
Right.
Right.
Well, and Jasper and I have been talking about it for a while, and it used to be the phone calls inquiring about if the city had moved forward on anything, if there had been any conversation. You know, they were every, just a couple, six months when I first started, then they were every three months. And the past couple of months, it's been twice a month, some different people, it seems. So, um, we just thought we'd put some information together for you guys to start the process of evaluating it and see where we'd wanna go with it.
And as the Red River Valley Supply Project has evolved, you know, we went from looking at intakes, and if you don't know what that is, it's supplying Missouri River water to the eastern side of the state. Um, so we've looked at, we looked at intake options down by the Bismarck area, kinda ruled that out. We looked at intake options up west of Washburn, um, over here, and it's doable, but it's, um, it would be, it'd take a lot, so now they're kinda shifting back towards getting it out of that canal. Again, they were trying to, um, stay away from the canal for federal reasons, um, staying, you know, stay away from the federal, federal government, um, just to keep it, keep the timeframe down, permitting down and all that. But, um, it looks like maybe they're heading back that way.
Um, when was that intake redone, you remember?
Two, uh, it would've been part of the 2009, 2010 improvements, or 2010.
Okay, so, I, I really, you know, I mean, God, we just stuck how much money in there, and I mean, it should be...
That's my, that's my concern, is if this is a wish list, or if it's a necessity, and, and this is kind of a tough time, you know, as far as in the city with the streets and everything else, and we hit them with another pile. You know, I don't know what you guys think about at least the study, it's, I guess I don't have a feeling either way on that, as far as...
But in the, in the study is, uh, would be a 65, 35, you know, you, you could still get, you know, that funded.
What?
We'd wanna make sure though, that if you didn't go through with the project, that you'd still, I don't think they would ask for anything back, but...
What, what would be the estimated cost of the study?
I don't, can I get back to you?
Sure. Well, another meeting in a couple of weeks?
Yeah, right. Is there one in a couple of weeks, or is it a month now?
I think it's every two weeks now.
Yeah, it's every two weeks now, uh, let's see.
June 13th is the next one.
Yeah, I thought...
Oh, this one's gonna be one, two, three, uh, well, yeah, it's a month now. Four weeks away.
Yeah, maybe, um, come up with an estimate of what it would cost this?
Sure. Yeah, and that's, that's fine, I, I'll bring that for next.
And when would this be done, if you do decide to do it? How soon, are we talking about doing this? Cause we're getting hit with all this other stuff, and now you're talking, obviously getting hit with...
This would be on our user fees, so this would be on the water bill.
Which?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty hard to begin with, especially if you're, if you're a single person, and you, it's based on, what, you have like a slide scale that you base this on, do you use so many, up to so many gallons, you get charged this amount of money? And now you're talking about increasing it on people who probably don't even use the minimum. You know, that, that gets kinda hard on people on fixed income, and then we keep increasing the amount that we're paying for. I think it's crazy what we pay for water.
So is, is your estimate, or that estimate in that letter, will that stay pretty consistent? Or do you think it'll be more, since we're talking about a few years ago? For user fee.
Oh, for user fees?
Yeah, overall, I guess.
The user fees is, all depends on what, uh, what you end up doing, I mean, it's hard to say, I mean...
We looked at the proposal on there.
Right, I mean, originally, we looked at, uh, boy.
Do we have excess money in the water fund, Joan?
Um, there's more in the sewer, I think, than the water. I don't know, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head.
What ballpark figure, half a million dollars, or?
No.
200,000?
I...
I'm just curious.
I don't know.
Well, just to give you an idea, this, this one showed if you were at a 50/50, you know, if you're assuming it was the 3.6, so if you were putting 1.8, you know, onto the residents, it was a $13.50 increase based on 6,000 gallons. So anything less than that, you know, it's just coming down.
Keeping the method of determining how much somebody pays as it is right now, not so much by the amount they actually use, but by your...
That was pa- that was just based on the 6,000 gallons per month.
6,000?
Actually, right now, we pay a base rate of, for up to 2,000 gallons of water per month, and then after that, you pay per gallon, you don't pay for more than what you use. So, however many gallons you use, that's exactly what you pay for. Uh, I mean, if you pay, if you, if you use under 2,000 gallons of water, you know, then, you know, we, we have to have that base rate, but anything over is at a straight percent per gallon, so you only pay for what you use.
And that percentage is?
So do you wanna, do you wanna a motion on that, to ask for an estimate?
0.04. 0.04.
No, it's just an estimate of what we're asking for, so, we'll table that, I think, till next meeting, and then, if that's okay with everybody, State Water Commission last that one. It's already been yours.
Hey, I guess to answer your question, I think, you know, it would probably be a study that would go into the fall, um, and then if the city decided, um, proceed with something, you know, we would probably do the design this winter and the next spring, and, you know, to bid it, maybe even in 2017. Maybe the work gets done in 2017, maybe in 2018, but... Can I just keep going on my, on my list?
Well, do you wanna do the resolutions now, or do you wanna just keep going with what you've got?
Well, we can go back up to number three.
Well, do you have a separate list, or do you have the same list for you?
Yeah, the same, same agenda you do.
Okay, let's go back to number three. Well, I don't know, maybe you got your own list.
Yeah, you got your own agenda here. Alright, the resolutions for that, it's clean water SRF, and drinking water SRF. Basically, it's just a resolution directing, uh, Larry and Joan the ability to sign the loan applications for the 2016 street utility project. I don't, I don't have those in front of me, Joan, but...
So do we need to read it to, uh?
I don't have them in front of me, so I can't read them to you.
I can go get them.
We should actually have them ready before we approve them?
I'm sorry.
Let's skip to the...
What?
We'll skip to the, uh...
She can't read those, she's not here.
Approving, no, sorry, sure.
So basically, on the fact that intake, the only problem that we had was during that flood, right? When they re, when they cut back the releases, was...
No, actually, the...
Cause isn't this intake a little deeper than the one we had before? I think it is.
The pipe has a gradual, uh, positive slope going out, but then we basically flattened it out. We just extended it out like 15 feet further into the channel, and it's basically flat.
But I think it's actually lower though, too.
If, not much if it is.
Well, yeah, but...
Cause we, we just stuck it out further, it all.
Right.
But no, since, since the flood is when they went back down to, what? I think just one time, they went down to 13,000 CFS, and, you know, it was still coming in, but it was...
Well, yeah, I realize, you don't like treating the upper foot of water anyway, so, that's where all the bad stuff is, so...
I just think you guys should be well informed of, uh...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, of what you could've done with that amount of grant money, and, and made a more decision before you, you know, decided whether to proceed or not.
Anything for me? Um, uh, resolution authorizing filed an application with the North Dakota Department of Health for loan under the Safe Drinking Water Act. Whereas under the terms of the Safe Drinking Water Act, the United States of America has authorized the making of loans to authorize applicants to aid in the construction of specific public projects, be resolved by the governing body of the City of Washburn, North Dakota, as follows. That Larry Thomas, President of the Washburn City Commission, be and is hereby authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the City of Washburn with the North Dakota Department of Health for a loan to aid in the construction of replacement of aging and deteriorating infrastructure, infrastructure associated with the 2016 street utility improvement projects. That Jones, Armond, Auditor B and is hereby authorized and directed to furnish such information as the North Dakota Department of Health may reasonably request in connection with the application, which is here and authorized to be filed, to be signed all necessary documents, and on behalf of the city to accept loan offer and receive payment of loan funds. Um, and then it has the certificate of the recording officer, or you and I will sign. And it is the same for the, um, for the clean water as well, they're both the same, they just have the different titles on them.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the resolutions?
I move to approve the resolutions for the clean water and drinking water funds, dr- directing authority to sign to Joan and Larry.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, Keith?
Aye.
Kit? Come on?
Aye.
Okay, for the 2016 project, we have, uh, tonight I have, uh, the contracts, um, that are ready to be signed, and we'll proceed, and then a resolution, um... approving the contractor's bond, the resolution, just another resolution tied back to doing the assessment process, so, um, I guess we'll start with the resolution. Resolution approving contractor's bond for Street Improvement District number twenty sixteen dash one, Water Improvement District twenty sixteen dash one and Sewer Improvement District twenty sixteen dash one. Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Washburn, North Dakota. That the city has awarded the contract for the improvement to Wagner Construction. That the contractor's bond for the improvement filed by the contractors in compliance with the provisions of the North Dakota Century Code and said bond is hereby approved.
I'll move to approve the resolution approving the contractor's bond.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess the, um, was at Dave Lindell's office today, we looked at the bond, we looked at the contract. So just a motion to approve the contract and the notice to proceed.
I'll move to approve the construction contract and notice to proceed.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
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 Just so everyone's aware, substantial completion date is October seventh, final completion date is October twenty eighth. We are having a pre-construction meeting this Thursday at four P M. I know they're itching to get going. They have crews ready to go, so I don't know if that means they'll be here next week or the following week. We'll find out on Thursday, but, um, they've been, they were in a big hurry to get the contracts and get them back and they got, uh, their submittals, shop drawn submittals to us already. We got some of those back, so I know they wanna get going anyway.
Uh, is that a transfer?
Uh, I'd like to bring up the chloramine switch over, not to keep bringing it up at each meeting, but last meeting it was discussed that we wouldn't do startup until end of May, early June, right after the meeting. Adam, you know, in looking at when they had to do their second quarter sampling for compliance, it, it ended up being this week. They got the health department to push it back to next week, so Adam was really hoping to do startup this week. We got everything ready to go today. I guess we're just looking for.
Is that gonna be enough time to, for the sampling to get that through the, run through?
I'm not, I am not concerned, um, you know, for you guys. I know they're, for one, they're planning to fill the pool tomorrow, I think, so that'll really help for the, for the low pressure, or for the low pressure system, so, um, that half of the system. But no, I, I think the residence time in Washburn is, is fairly low compared to a lot of other bigger systems like Bismarck, for example, I, you know, it would probably not be wise to do it this quickly, but, um, I don't think that it will be an issue.
It is, it is your job, no.
You need a motion here or what do you need?
Well, I, I guess unless anybody feels that, you know, we shouldn't proceed, I don't know that. It, it was more just for information purposes that.
We probably should have a motion because it wasn't gonna be till the end of May. You know, that's what was discussed, so.
I move that we switch over to chloramines on Wednesday, is this?
I think Adam would like to do it tomorrow, Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Everything's ready to go. Okay, we have a motion, wait a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? So how is McLean Charity gonna flush her lines when they have no flush hydrants? And then they blame us for that?
Well, I, if they don't get their system flushed, you know, and do their due diligence, it's not, can't really be put back on the city for that.
Sure, they'll try.
But. It's in, we, you guys made a great effort this spring to get it going and, in the end, it'll be just fine, so.
Well, yeah, just saying, you know, so. Any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
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 I believe that's all I have on my list.
Anybody have, anybody have anything for Jasper? What's tomorrow, the seventeenth? Okay, I guess that's it for you then, okay? Safety vests for public works department. Didn't you buy a bunch of those last year?
You know, we bought individual shirts.
I thought we bought, we bought a bunch of vests too, though. We were close to them. We bought shirts and then we were gonna buy a bunch of vests, I thought.
Well, we bought shirts. Unless they bought more vests out in the shop, but when we talked to both Kim and Brian, they both said that we could use some more vests. So.
That'll be safe, so, yeah.
Well, and we're just, um.
I, I think vests is a way to go rather than shirts, you know.
Yeah, and the, um, the vests that we have right now, they're very hot. So we're just looking at one that maybe has a little more mesh on it and a little cooler, so that whatever clothing they choose to wear throughout the summer, we have the vest that they can just wear, wear every day.
How many do you mean?
And they don't have to worry about it. Um, I think we were looking at a dozen.
Couple different sizes or?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And these here, they start at fourteen dollars apiece. There are cheaper ones out there, we'll continue to look, but for a high quality at one that's still very cool when they're out there, that was about the going rate for them.
Where's this from? Oh, safety, something like that. Well, you know, I mean, we gotta be safe, you know, I guess I just, uh, would encourage everybody to not throw them on the floor and step on them and get their tory shoes all over them and take care of them, you know, so they can last for more than a year. But yeah, we wanna keep our people safe, so. A motion to buy, what, a dozen vests?
I moved, I moved that we buy a dozen vests for safety.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Aye. Kayla Sweeney, regarding property located at four one four Main Avenue, the Dusty House, that was.
Yeah. I've heard scolded around town about, um, you know, looking into the condition of the house, whether or not it is condemnable. I want, I guess I'm wondering if the city, um, do you have any kind of process, um, going as far as trying to condemn it or what to do with that? I mean, is there something going with that?
So Joan, you had talked about, well, we had talked at that one meeting about some, sure, something or other, and you said that really wasn't a.
Well, we've notified the health department a number of times. They have come and they've looked at the property. They can only look at the outside of the property, they can't go in. Um, the taxes are paid on it and so that's, you know, it's kind, it's still considered a private residence. Um, I talked to David Lindell about it and he said, you know, we can, there are different avenues that can be taken, but, you know, from the outside, what, what health hazard in there is there? There's a lot of different things that fall into it. So, um, he said he was going to try to get ahold of the owner and see what, what could happen.
Has he been able to contact her yet?
He has not been able to get ahold of her yet.
What happened to the administrative warrant?
Uh, we checked into that. David said that it either was unapplicable for our situation or wasn't something that, I guess that's the same thing. Wasn't, he didn't feel that that was applicable.
So, so kind of nothing is happening, right?
I've, I've gone as far as, I've gone as far as we, we can go within our ordinances right now.
To see, I mean, what would it, it would take for Dave Lindell to get in touch with her and to be able to gain access to, to the house, to get in there, to condemn it? Or, I mean, what is?
I, I, I apologize. I guess I don't know the actual process. It seems like every time when I contact someone, the old, the same answer that I get is, is structural, you know, from the outside is structurally sound and it's not in jeopardy of the city taking over the house. For the city ordinances, we have, you know, we have our junk ordinances, we have blighted structures, we have, we don't have anything that dictates the inside of the home, what it, what, what needs to be done. So now I see the grass is growing, so we can start, start the letters with the grass and things. But in all honesty, it's, we send a letter, they have thirty dollars, thirty days to reply. So then after that point, then the city can go in and we can mow it. I mean, there's still a few more weeks in timeframe in there. And then it can get assessed back to the property. But, and, and that's always, that's an option and we'll maybe end up coming to that.
But as of right now, it's in good standing with the city.
Quote, quote. Um, right now, the city has taken it as far as we can go at this particular time.
You know, unless David comes up with something.
Yes, yes, yep.
And they don't feel that what's going on in the inside of the house is any kind of a problem?
The state health department cannot enter the inside of the building.
When I talked to the health department, she told me that with administrative warrant, that would have to be gotten by the city of Washburn to the sheriff's department. They could administer administrative warrant and then if the health department can go into the house. And at that point.
Did you talk first district health or did you talk to state health department? Who did you talk to, do you remember?
Somebody of mine, I, I can't remember. I had her name written down and then I, I didn't bring it. I wasn't even planning on talking about this, so. Yeah.
I can get in touch with David again and see, you know, what the next step is, where he can take it.
I can probably give you the name of who I talked to, Joan. You know, because they're.
Yes, but it's just, it's probably actually the same person that came down last fall to take a look at.
Was it a woman?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, yeah. And so then if the health department comes in and they're going to see that there's black mold and feces and everything everywhere and that the house is structurally sound, but it is inhabitable.
Have you been in there?
Not per se.
What's that?
I played the fifth. Stand on the fifth on that one.
What did you ask?
No.
He asked if she'd been in there.
Been in there?
No.
No.
Well, then how do you know what's in there?
Well, walked on the outside, looked in the window.
Yeah.
And refrigerator door handle, it's got about a half inch of black.
Have you seen hoarders? This show?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, so.
Are we being recorded?
I know.
Yes, and I'm not gonna say I've been in there. I, I think we all know the state of the home and I think it's, it's an unfortunate situation. She's not here in Washburn, she's out.
She's had a stroke.
And it needs to be taken care of, so we can try to get ahold of David again and, or I will get ahold of David again and see what the next step is, as far as within the city ordinances at this particular time. We've.
And so then once it gets condemned, then the city owns it?
No.
Then, well, if it's condemned, you'd, you'd more than likely get an order for some kind of a judge, I suppose, an order to be torn down or whatever and then if she couldn't pay it, then it would be assessed to the property or something like that, or I'm assuming.
When I talked to David about it, he just said, you know, do we, I said, well, there's animals running around it and he says, do you, you know, where's the, the proof of it? Who's been inside the house to see the proof of it? Because it's gonna have to be defendable in court. Because it would be the city taking her to court and so then it would mean, um, you know, just having it defendable. Where it seems like it's com, you know, it seems like it would just be easy because it's just in such bad shape, but it's.
So me having a personal relationship with her where I have spoken to her over the phone over the years, I've gone to church with her. If she was to give me permission to go in the house, I can't even.
That's between you and her.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I can't say it, or I mean.
No, absolutely, that's between you and her. When I talked to her, she hung up on me. Yeah, she's not. No, I have tried, I have called her a number of times also and the last time it was not well received.
Oh, and see.
So.
I went to church with her, I'm in good standing with her.
So that might be an excellent, you know, way to go.
Take pictures.
And so I can gain access by talking to her and.
But does she have? Can the state, uh, health department go in with her? See, that's a.
That is not something that any of us can advise you on.
No, I, I'm just.
I don't know, you'd have to ask them.
I don't think so.
I don't think they'd be able to. I think I, I think that would be, she would allow me to go in, but not them.
I would imagine, no, and it's just, I'm guessing that if you would take pictures and brought them out, that might be a different story.
But may, maybe she would also be receptive to you helping her, helping her to get some of those decisions made as far as the house, you know, because sometimes people just need to have a little help or to have that conversation, but, you know, what I'm calling, I'm calling from the city, so.
Right, and she's not in good health. She's had a series of strokes. She, um, it's hard to understand her. Her father has, she was living in both those with her father. Her father has since passed. You know, she has a mortgage out on the house, you know, um.
It's a test situation.
She will talk to me, yes, it's just that, um.
Well, yeah, I would suggest you pursue that then.
I just don't know that.
That would be good, absolutely.
So if she got permission to go into the house and she took pictures, then you would submit them to the health department or would she have to submit?
No, none of us are saying that.
I'm not saying that.
Uh, okay.
Is she making payments on the house?
She has a mortgage out on the house. The house is paid for, I believe, in full, but she has taken a mortgage out. Uh, and so she's paying the, you know, the mortgage. So, I don't really know how all that works either, you know, um.
So she uses the house for collateral?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so if she, you know, if the health department comes in, then the bank, then wouldn't it become the banks?
Why don't you see if you can get in touch with her? If she'll discuss it with you and let her know that we do want to help her, but also get the house cleaned up and then see where we can all go with it, maybe together where it's the least offensive to her. And then we'll take it from there. Because maybe, maybe there's some extra help out there for her because of the situation that she's in as far as the house.
Does it, do you have no kids or anything like that?
No.
No, darn, because that's another avenue, but.
She has a brother that's in poor health and not, she's kind of on her own. Um, there, there's just really nothing there and.
And she is willing to sell it.
The boyfriend, the, uh, the boyfriend that she had is, he was on, he died seven, seven, eight years ago.
Eight years, seven, eight years ago.
You know, so, yeah, it's just her and, you know, her vehicle is still sitting there.
It's.
I mean, that vehicle's in, you know, excellent shape. It's almost brand new, but she, you know, she can't drive anymore.
Okay, well, we need to move on, but, oh, no, but, um, yeah, but if you would wanna talk to her and see if you can get in there and then, and then we'll take it from there, you know, kind of hopefully be able to help coordinate something on that with you, but, you know, um, we, we can't say now that if you take pictures, we're gonna do something with them because we just can't answer that, so.
But would she, would she be able to take pictures? Can she legally take pictures?
You'd have to ask a lawyer or not.
If she had to directly ask Kathy.
That's not for us to say, that's not for us to say.
If Kathy gave me permission, you know.
If she gives you permission, then you can, because it's her house.
And that is between you and her. That's not something the city could get involved in or that we would be able to help her.
Right, I just wanna make sure that you guys don't already have something, you know, in the process of happening that I'm going to interfere with by whatever it is I'm doing on my end. I don't wanna interfere with, you know, if you guys have something already.
I think if it can be resolved where it's not a matter of taking or recording or doing any, anything like that, that's always the better avenue to go.
Yeah, I don't think that'll, she can make it to court.
Yeah.
You know, so, um.
Is that her?
Okay, well, I just don't wanna, you know, ruin anything else.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Uh, review of properties for cleanup.
Thank you, Ms. Ten two.
Wait.
Oh, I did, you're right. We'll go back to that.
Okay.
You know why, except Mark got to go on one.
Oh.
Um, it's just that time of year again where we have properties that are in need of attention. So, um, you know, if whoever wants to assess the properties in town and then give me a list and we'll send out the appropriate cleanup letters. Um, in the past, a couple commissioners have gone around, our commissioner with one of our public works or whatnot have gone around.
Anybody wanna volunteer for that? What do you want me to do, with somebody?
You just volunteered?
I think so too.
I could probably run, do it with Turk or whoever, so. See what we can come up with, okay?
We have seen some properties that have been cleaned up and, you know, they're being maintained and stuff, but there's still a few that are small timers that repeat offenders.
Yeah, and some that never cleaned.
Yeah.
All right, desk equipment.
Oh, we just, we need to order a, it's an under the desk tray thing for a computer desk, but it's about three hundred dollars, so, I know.
What is it, though?
Um, it's for, it's, mm-hmm, for the keyboard to put underneath the desk, instead of having the, the keyboard sitting up on the desk, the keyboard needs to be underneath the desk.
Is that from the same place you got the, uh...
It'll be, it's be, that's almost like the same one, so, but they're up to three hundred dollars.
Okay. That sounds fine to me. I'm assuming the keyboard's too high on top of the desk, is that?
Yeah. Little carpet tunnel.
Well, yeah, it's still, it's still funny.
Yeah, it's after a while.
Right, hey. What else did I miss? That's it, right? What for the others?
Um, the only thing I really have is just that, uh, we're still working on putting a sign out there by the Dollar Store in front of the school, between the store and the Dollar Store. And there'll be a sign, digital sign, the school's working on it with Waita, and it's gonna have school announcements, it's going to, and it's also gonna be like Washburn Cardinals and Old Works.
Did you bring this up before?
I probably have, no?
I think so.
Okay. I don't really bring it. Anyway, that's what they're working on right now, and it's going to be a digital sign, two-sided, and you're gonna be able to see it from the frontage road and the, um, highway going, going by, and it's just mainly going to say Washburn Cardinals and then have city and school announcements on it, you know, things like that on it.
How big is that?
Uh, they're trying to make it as, as big as possible, so they can, it's gonna be bigger than the banks, probably bigger than the banks, because they wanna be...
Well, you wanna be able to read it, it's probably, 'cause you know, they got that one that will, boy, unless you pull over, pull over, you can't read it, so.
Yeah, I think they were thinking like twenty, twenty feet wide, fifteen to twenty feet wide, but it, but anyway, um, they're also thinking about to buy it down, getting sponsors.
Oh.
And what they would do is five thou, they'd try to get like six to nine sponsors, and then they charge about five thousand, and their sponsorship would stay on there for the life of the sign. So maybe like the Credit Union Bank or GRE, those type of things, and buying it, buying down. And I'm not proposing this, but I'm just saying that if they both asked that if the city would be interested in the next biennium at all, helping in any way, uh, they would obviously be interested in that as well. But that's, that's all I got.
I would almost think that'd be one sense of things, you know? Okay, uh, but that's, they want nothing from us now, right?
No.
Okay?
Well, it's awesome.
Well...
Okay.
Keith and I talked about, uh, you know, or maybe it's me and Kit, I can't remember, but, uh, talked about, you know, getting a list of stuff to, used equipment to sell, so, uh, we'll probably get together and whoever, and if you and I want to work with Keith, whatever, and we'll see what we can come up with maybe for next meeting or something,
And then have an auction or something, or just, what do you, or just put it in the paper to sell, or, or bids?
Probably be bids, yeah, more than likely. See what we got anyway and then kind of go from there, so, um... Joan, you up, you ready?
I do, excuse me, um, the special assessment committee has finished their assessing, their business, the dividing up, um, we're gonna have one more quick meeting on Thursday. They have set the public hearing for the special assessment on July eleventh, Monday, July eleventh, at six thirty. So, prior to that, we will have the public, publication of all of the specials for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen project in the paper, they'll run for two weeks, and then within fif, after a minimum of fifteen days, then we have the public hearing. Once the assessments are confirmed and everything is sorted out by the, uh, special assessment committee, then it will come to the city commission and people will be able to appeal to the city commission also if they want to discuss their assessments further. So that's just kind of a quick rundown, but the gist of it is the public hearing for the special assessments will be on July eleventh at six thirty at the Memorial Building, in the basement, because the floor will be, be completed.
Sorry, where'd you say it would be?
At the Memorial Building, in the basement.
Okay.
Is the, the building over there. And then I have something else, it's kind of random, um, you know, I've been noticing a pretty good increase in AV, ATV traveling across our city streets. A lot of younger people are driving four-wheelers on the streets. I had a very, very nice young couple of kids just across the street from me yesterday, and they could hardly reach across the, the handlebars. So, um, I did check into just some of the basic regulations for AV, ATV operation, and, um, I guess I am recommending that we put an ad in the paper or send some, uh, both possibly, if we can send some notices home with the kids at school or just run some ads in the paper. The ones that got me, uh, under eighteen, they are required to wear a helmet, anyone between twelve and sixteen years of age are legally op, they can operate on public lands, um, but they have to have a valid driver's license or carry with them the OHV safety certification card from the North Dakota Parks and Rec.
Is that public land or is that coon street?
Um, it says that, um, some communities allow streets, but basically, no, they're not supposed to be on streets, if they are on the streets, um, any public roadway, there's a list of certain things that the vehicle has to have in order for it to be on a public street.
In other words, they have to have a license, right?
Mm-hmm, yep, either a regular driver's license, or if they're twelve, they have to have that OHV, and the, the couple that I saw yesterday, they were, I don't know, ten, eleven, twelve, maybe.
I've seen some pretty small kids.
They're, they're pretty small, and the vehicles are too large, and, you know, we're, some of the vehicles that we're seeing, like the little golf cart type, uh, things that are driving around, what are they?
Side by side?
Oh, yeah, there you go. You know, those are all street legal and they're fine, but it seems like as we have seen more of those on the city streets, we're also seeing now more of the, the ATVs going around also.
But they're also supposed to have a license on them too, right?
Yep, oh yeah.
Yeah, they're supposed to be street legal.
Yeah, but they're supposed to be licensed by the state.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and the thing is, I at least need to be pulling some of these people over.
They need to be insured also.
Absolutely.
And then, um...
Well, if you read into that, two, twelve to sixteen, they can't be over anything over like eighty CC, certain size limit too.
And, um, just quickly, when I was reading today, the one that really interested me is riding with passengers, and, these are all Centricode. It's not, you know, it's, I thought it was just, you know, the rules and regulations, but it's actually straight Centricode, so, but, um, for passengers on the ATVs, they're supposed to have, and the special extra seat that goes on the back, so just riding two on a four-wheeler is actually illegal, unless you have the extra seat. And, uh, no one under the age of six, so, anyway, I was...
Age of six?
No, but to ride on.
As a passenger.
Passenger, like, whoa! Yeah. Anyway, so I've, I've actually would, it kind of bothered me yesterday, seeing those two younger ones on the four-wheeler, and it's not the first time, so I'd like to run just a few ads, just letting people know that they're not supposed to be on the streets and, and take care of them.
Well, I think it wouldn't hurt to, uh, you know, put an ad in the paper for a couple of weeks, and then, uh, as far as, you know, printing off and sending home, I don't, I think that would be maybe a bit of a no-er kill, because, you know, you know, it's only a handful of people and here you're sending out.
And I don't know if we need to get into great detail, just mainly that, you know, you have to be a certain age and you have to be licensed, right?
I just think it's an F, just a general FYI of, hey, don't forget, little kids can't ride four-wheelers.
That includes the alleys as well, right?
Uh, public streets.
Public, public roadways, yeah. Yeah, so...
Trust me, the deputies aren't gonna go down the alleys, they...
No, I know.
Yeah, but you know what's gonna happen, is, is this really is gonna do nothing, I mean, we need to start here, it's really gonna do nothing, and then we're gonna end up doing an ordinance, you know, that's what's gonna happen.
But like she said, it's in the Centricode, so we shouldn't have to, right? The ATV is in the Centricode, isn't that part of what?
Oh, it is, but to, to make it more restrictive to where they're not allowed on our particular streets, with in Washburn, it'd need to be an ordinance.
I would say most cities have started their own ordinance, because it's, every, well, every small town, it's, it's, the problem is a varying degree, to every, you know, all kinds of people using them, to, I don't, it hasn't been too bad in Washburns from my observation, but other towns I've been in, you know, it's constant, when you're sitting in a commission meeting, going down Main Street, so.
Yeah, a little bit smaller towns, yeah. Another thing that really irks me too is when they, you know, drive the same path down the highway, boy, it makes your town look like crap, you know, when you got two ruts going right next to the road, that just looks terrible.
So do we need a motion on that, or just?
For an add in the paper, please.
Oh, that we put an ad in the paper for two weeks on the, uh, about ATVs.
Yeah.
And motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Good? Mom?
Aye.
I just got, sorry, I have to go back.
Wait, we're on Joan right now.
Is Joan?
No, I'm done.
Okay. I know we set aside money for green building, but, for the green building, but have we done anything with that money, as far as fixing it up or anything, or?
Kind of, um, Belle, Helen Twidda's on the committee, and then I think, well, I think she's on the historical side, right?
So they know there's money there available?
Well, I don't know, they should, yeah.
Yeah, they do, we've talked to Belle about it.
But maybe you could give her a call and just see if they got anything in the works for, and report on that for next meeting, Joan, you think?
And then I do have one thing after you.
Okay, and then one other thing is, is for budgeting, if we do plan on, um, shingling or doing something with the Memorial Hall roof, I suppose we probably need to get estimates before we even budget, because, so we know how much to budget, if that makes sense, unless we, we don't plan on doing it, then we don't need to worry about it, but...
Well, I, I think it's gonna take several years of budgeting to build that up, but, yeah, I wouldn't, well, I thought, wasn't Dwayne gonna talk to Wagon Wheel about that?
Oh, was he?
Well, I believe that's what he said.
Oh, you have a better memory than I do. Now, you were gonna talk to him about ten, wasn't he? Put a price on ten for it, yeah.
Well, then you were never at touch again, so.
Right, yeah. Damn it.
Keith, where are we, Keith or Joan?
How many meetings does he have left? He kept stating that too.
He must have thought, done.
Um, I just, a couple months ago, I had talked about getting a, a bid to redo the sign out front, we had, um, it was in the budget, and then we talked about getting a bid, and then we were discussing that there was a shortfall of money, so I thought we'd